Olga and. I'm Olga and I believe Mary Ann will be joining us, but she's not here yet, correct? Go ahead and get started. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Can you move this to a vote please?
Marie Poffey.
Aye.
Mary Ann Duncan Cole is not quite on yet. Olga Hodges.
Aye.
Christie Morgan.
Aye.
Mary Williams.
Aye.
Irene Kakarina.
Aye.
Motion is adopted. I would like to take a minute to welcome our two newly appointed trustee and trustee-elect joining us today. In position one, representing Clark County at large, I'd like to welcome incoming trustee Irene Kakarina. Irene's appointment to the board has been confirmed by all counties in the district and is an official member of our board, so welcome. In position two, representing City of Vancouver, some of you will recognize her, please welcome trustee-elect Megan Dugan. Megan Dugan. She served on FER award funding previously in this filling at Parkville term. She will be participating tonight as a non-voting trustee-elect as we await her joint confirmation from all district count. So welcome Megan. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Oh wait, I'm sorry, I'm getting out of my cell phone. Yes, it's a public comment. So we will have up to an hour to take public comments and you will have two minutes to speak. No clapping or noise during or between speakers. Please no inappropriate language. Be respectful of one another and direct your comments up to the board, you'll stand right here and speak to us. No playing over or recordings or videos and make sure you say your name into the microphone before you begin.
We are going to start with Tiffany Heine. Followed by Quill and then Randy Higginson.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Morgan, thank you for opening this up to the public. I know I've been here several times before and although it may be this same project, different verse, I just want to continue stressing the importance to not have drag queen story hour. Any man dressed up in women's clothing, reading books to minors is more about people who defy gender restriction. Those individuals are not for children and more importantly, they're not even for the LGBT community. This is a fetish to indoctrinate young minds to the point of confusion of gender difference. There is two genders. With all due respect of all human life, please keep drag queen story hour out of our libraries. Thank you.
Will Onsted.
Hi. My name is Quill Onsted and my pronouns are they/them. I'm here to speak in support of Drag Queen Story Hour as a gender clear member of the library community. It's December and the darkness seems to descend faster and faster. Of course, one only has to look at the news for the metaphorical darkness to hit even harder. For better or worse, it's been long enough since states have started enacting anti-transgender legislation for research on the effects to be published. In the September 2024 issue of Nature to Human Behavior, Lee et al. explored the causal impact anti-transgender legislation has had on suicide rates for trans and non-binary young people. This was a massive study with over 60,000 participants in all 50 states. After anti-trans legislation went into effect, researchers found that the suicide rate for teens between the ages of 13 to 17 went up anywhere from seven to 72% compared to teens in states without such legislation. I encourage you to read the whole paper, which I provided copies of. Of course, when it's dark outside, that makes it all the easier to find the light. Libraries serve as bonfires in the dark, beacons of hope to anyone who walks through the doors. We get to hear about it every month from executive director Gilchop and the branch managers. From book displays to programs to community outreach. Libraries bring people together and let them learn about the world and its infinite diversity. Drag Queen Story Hour is a vital program that teaches kids about gender identity in an age-appropriate manner. Parents who do not approve of Drag Queen Story Hour do not have to bring their children to any Drag Queen Story Hour programs. Please allow the staff at FER libraries to present Drag Queen Story Hour and have the district live up to the ideals espoused in FER libraries equity statement. Thank you for your service to the community.
Randy Schmidt, followed by Gary Wilson and Autumn Warner.
Thank you for letting me speak to you today. So as you know, I have made a standing request that you develop and implement a policy banning drag queen story hours in your libraries. Persons from the LGBT community have routinely been lying the request as a bigoted, ignorant, fearful response to drag queens and other LGBT issues. I am not a religious bigot. It's sad that those who don't agree with the policy positions advocate for and don't engage on the merits of the policy, but instead just do muscle me. Here's the facts. Over the last year, the science explaining the explosions of teen girls claiming transgender identity clearly shows it's a social contagion and not an evolutionary step in human development. Reference the study on Generation Tech by Jean Tranch. The science also clearly demonstrates that when a child identifies as the opposite gender of their birth, there is a net harm to the children. Reference the Cause Review by the UK National Health Service. The originators of Drag Queen Story Hour also stated their goal in creating these events is to cause gender confusion. That's from their website, published nationally. Do we want children to question their gender at the ages of five to eight years old? Doesn't make any sense to me. That claim causes them harm. So it's due to these truths that I respectfully request you again that you develop a policy banning drag queen story hours. I don't do so out of bigotry or fear. I do so out of the desire to protect children in our community from the harm caused to them by questioning their true gender. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, make sure you say your name when you come in.
Mary Wilson.
Mary Wilson, thank you board members for your service and welcome back Megan and welcome. Wanted to, I just asked, yeah, please continue to err on the side of caution when it comes to programming for the most vulnerable patrons, the children. And I also wanted to give a Christmas book to you guys. It's from the bestselling creator of Better than a Gone. It's many times, this one's called Mortimer's Christmas Manger. It's about a mouse who's living in a dark hole in the house and Christmas time, he sees a manger, you know, the barn. He figured, oh, that's just my size, so he moves in. Thatching's out and the next day he goes back up and that's even happening, so he has to pull him out again. And eventually on Christmas Eve, he hears the Christmas story. Talking a long time ago in a little town called Bethlehem. Mortimer heard about people named Joseph and Mary, about shepherds and traveling widows. And there was no room for them in the inn. And then Mortimer heard about the baby, the baby who was born in a stable and had no real bed, but slept in a wooden manger. Baby born to save the world and his name shall be called Jesus. Mortimer looked at, you know, at the bed and decided he's going to put Jesus back in that bed and mentioned, and looked really cozy in there. And sniffled and said, there's no room for you in the inn, but there's room for you here. And at the end, he crawled down and he just said a prayer, Jesus, if you could, you were born to save the world. Perhaps you could bring me a new home. Came down, he spied a gingerbread house and he just hid in there. So just a cute little book for kids and it's fine. Give it to the libraries. Enjoy reading it. My daughter just started reading.
Autumn Warner.
Merry Christmas.
Autumn, followed by Sue, followed by Judy.
My name is Autumn Warner. My pronouns are she/her/them. I moved here 12 years ago and one of the first places I came to was this beautiful library. I think quite now if I belong here quite yet, I moved here for a job and haven't been here before. And the reason the library was the first place I came to was because for me, the soul of a place is its library. And a library says so much about a place. I moved here 12 years ago as a social worker in this community and I've been serving in that role ever since. This library has proven to be a really beautiful, inclusive space that so many people I work with have found solace in. And I come here to make gratitude for the space that is here, for the inclusivity that is here. I think it's important to always make room and for people who are not given room at the table. When we, when we think about room being made for people and thinking, want to include all people in that. And this space to me is a beacon of that. A space is so much about its people and the librarians and the staff here are vital to this beautiful place and deserve all of the respect, enjoy gratitude that we can give them. I know it is human nature to fear losing what we hold dear and we care deeply about those that we love. We all want beautiful, safe spaces to hold. My hope is that instead of trying to keep out and control what we don't agree with, that we can keep moving. Thank you.
Please present.
My name's Sue Clanty and I moved here 13 years ago from a conservative state. And partly I did so because at that library, they were wanting to exclude, exclude. We completely pushed out anybody who was gay, different in any way, including being that. It doesn't help. It doesn't help to not have access to information. And having a wild, free-ranging, organic library is crucial for mental development of all sorts, not just to people, everybody. And it's not pushing any agenda on anybody to just say things exist and even not to even just just have the books on the shelves. It doesn't push anything on anybody. They're free to not pick that book out. They're free to not check it out. Anyway, I appreciate libraries and the librarians. I appreciate the diversity that is here. I want to keep that. I want that land to keep that diversity because, you know, I want to, I want to have access. I'm a writer and illustrator. I've written more than 20 books that are read all over the world by a diverse group of people and I'm all over the world. And the librarians here helped me do the research for those books. And I couldn't do my job without them. I mean, I'm here one every other week. I mean, you guys are very important to me. And being able to experience all walks of life and all people, that helps me speak to all people and welcome all people. And that's important because everybody matters. And I don't mean that in the pejorative way everybody says that nowadays, but life members, we all matter. We're not just different people.
Next we have Judy Son, followed by Charles Fortu.
I suspect I didn't need to tell you that. I was once saved by a librarian. I am gay. I knew that when I was a little bit kid. Well, I knew I had my first crush when I was 15. My father passed away. He was a preacher, by the way. And I thought I was the only gay person in my town. By theory, in my high school. Opened her office. She explained to me that I was not alone. I was not the only one in that thing. I wasn't certainly among the whole United States. So I love libraries. I love Ford. You have created amazing institution here. But for the high school, I had the only library. In small towns where I was born and had years in us of my schooling in the 90s. So around it, all of the diversity of libraries, you have, that you have created aboard, all of the board. I'm so proud of you all. I love you. I love what you have created. Thank you very much.
Next we have Charles Fortu.
Hello, I'm Charlie Fortu and first thing I want to do is say I love everything that she just said. My grandson Asa is like nine now and when he was five, we brought him to the Drag Queen Story Hour and it was great. He had a great time. He started coming to Story Hour here when he was like two and it was one of the best experiences. And there's no better, safer place to bring children than to the library. And I love this library. I live close by and every morning about 5:30, I walk around it. It's just part of my walking path and I walk along this south wall outside. And I just want to say I see the people who are sleeping on the sidewalk huddled against the wall. And in a few hours after I leave, they're going to be standing at the front door with a crowd, a small crowd, other people who have been sleeping in other places outside. And they're all going to come in and I just, they are welcomed and they are treated with respect and compassion. And I just want to say I think so much of this library and the people, the manager, the manager of this library, the guards, the staff. They treat these people with compassion and respect. And occasionally when things, when the inner chaos of some of these lives kind of breaks out, spills out and becomes a disturbance, they handle it with just so much, so much dignity and so much patience. And I will give a little shout out to the new manager of security, Greg. It has been a huge, well, it's just huge to have somebody professional like that in place now. I am honored to be a small part of this.
Please no applause for speakers. Thank you.
Well, I have signed up.
No one would like to put stuff signed up, right? Okay, so we still have time in the hour. Is there anyone who did not get to make a comment that was just to do so now, either online or in person?
Make just a quick comment. I need to cover the microphone.
Please, yeah, just say your name and then you'll have two minutes.
Yeah. My name is Greg Wong. I'm a resident of Vancouver, I've been for 20 years. And this is impromptu, I just didn't know the meeting was taking place tonight and I see the topic is took an interest. But I guess I just have a question for everyone to consider. And that is, do you realize that logically it's not possible for everyone, everyone's moral standards to be represented by the library here through the, through the drag queen program that you have? Not that it can be a win in this sense, to have your way. So I guess I'm a Christian, come from a biblical worldview and ethic. And so I view, I view what you're doing as very contrary to what the scriptures teach. And so I'm not represented in that sense because, because of the program. And it's contradictory in nature to what, what, you know, teaches me, it's scripture. So do you realize, you know, you, what you're doing is really not permitting me to have my way in this sense. But it happened to permit you to represent it. You're simply representing your own, your own moral interests. And obviously the interest of a number here as well in the community, but not everybody. So there's a logical contradiction and not everybody, some can be excluded. Apparently I'm one of them. You know, you talk a lot about inclusion, you know, talk about we want diversity. But again today, it doesn't work that way, not logically.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like to come up? Were there any online? Thank you. I'm closing the public comment section of this meeting. Thank you all. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? So is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Can you move this to a vote please?
Marie Poffey.
Aye.
Mary Ann Duncan Cole. Olga Hodges.
Aye.
Christie Morgan.
Aye.
Mary Williams.
Aye.
Irene Kakarina.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll move on to the report section of our meeting. First up, is the October financial statements of kitchen.
And before she starts, I just want to make note that she's asked for several months to be first on the agenda and not after all the fun things. So we're going to do the fun financials first this month. I feel so good being heard. Good evening. Tonight, we are looking at the financials for the Department of Vancouver Regional Libraries through October of 2024. You will see there on page 19 of 85 at the top, you see the cash balance we started the year with. You see that we have revenues here to date of about 29.9 million. And then you see two different lines for expenditures. You see 28.8 million expenditures and then an adjustment for approved expenditures. These are costs that we've incurred but not yet paid. Often these haven't been paid because we are waiting for vendors to satisfy state requirements. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk about capital and the expenditures. So part of the reason I'm mentioning this is the net of those three numbers is showing that year to date, we are ahead by 1.5 million. I think it's important for us to know or reiterate that the timing of our property tax revenues, they come in in April and they come in in October. So we have received the vast majority of our revenues through the year. And this report doesn't consider November and December expenditures. So we fully expect and have planned to spend down cash by December 31st and we are on trend for that. Moving down towards the bottom section there, the additional reserve allocations. You can see that we've fully expended the woodland project reserves, planned it just over 4 million. And we've spent nothing else in that section through October 31, 2024. Moving on to page 20, this is our revenue section. Overall, our revenues are meeting or exceeding expectations based on timing and other known factors. I will say that under our property taxes, you can see that Clark County property taxes are at 94% and the others are below that. The way that the property taxes come into the other counties and then are receipted into Clark County, there's often a one-month lag. So we will see a little bit more in the taxes on November financial report. Moving on to intergovernmental grants and contracts, we are significantly on target there. The Gale Valley Library District contract, we will be receiving the rest of those revenues in November as well on the November's report. And then going down to miscellaneous. We have significant revenues in that list associated with the woodland project. We have fully expended and become reimbursed through the foundation as it's related to the grant. And we are currently billing the foundation and the friends through the foundation for other project costs. Any questions on revenues before I move to expenditures? Okay. Page 21. This is going to show us our expenditures through October. We know from many months of talking about it now, our personnel expenditures are under budget. This is showing 73% of budget and our target at this point in the year would be 83%. And this is from vacancies that we know that we have. So this is an expected variance at this point based on non-vacancies. Our supplies budget and our library books and materials budget are also under trend. We expect that gap to close by the end of the year. And then our other services and charges are right on track at 83% through the end of October. As we go down to capital outlay. You can see there that our woodland project is 100% on two lines and 8% and 27% in the other lines. We are still actively getting invoice and invoicing for those items. And then you'll see that our non-owned and our owned are below target. Capital can be tricky. We can budget what we know we will do. We can perform the work and we can even have the invoices in hand. However, with anything that is public works, there are legal requirements through the state. And sometimes it gets held up between the vendors and the states, the state agencies processing the vendor's information. So with that, it can delay us making payments and that has happened to, for some of these invoices. Any questions on expenditures or any other elements of the financial report? Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion to receive and file the October financial statements as presented? There are seconds. Any further discussion? Can you move this to a vote please?
Marie Poffey.
Aye.
Mary Ann Duncan Cole. Olga Hodges.
Aye.
Christie Morgan.
Aye.
Mary Williams.
Aye.
Irene Kakarina.
Aye. Motion to receive and file the October financial statements, they've adopted. Next up is the Vancouver branch report with Molly Leelock.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Molly Leelock and I'm the branch manager of this lovely library. I have the pleasure of telling you about all the great things we accomplished this last year. And I would be for a marine. I'm going to start with the numbers. Numbers always tell a good story. Our library was built in 2011, celebrated its 13th birthday this past summer. It is a big, beautiful building, 83,000 square feet. We have at the moment 34 full-time employees and 14 part-time employees who keep operations running. Our visitors, as of the time I made these slides, 315,000. Um, our visitors, as of the time I made these slides, three hundred fifteen thousand-ish, give or take. That is a four percent increase from last year. So we like to see those numbers going up. Our annual circulation of physical materials, we can see six thousand eighty-four, five hundred thirty-six. Sorry, I'm not saying the number right. Six hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-six. Our summer at your library numbers were really good this year, two up, uh, six percent from last year. We had seventeen hundred readers sign up. Next slide please. I want to talk about the staff right off the bat because they are amazing and they keep the building running. They give great customer service. They're enthusiastic. They roll with the punches every day. Um, you can see here, this is our Halloween celebration this last October. Um, we had, most of the staff were dressed up as Waldo and so part of the scavenger hunt for kids and for patrons that came to the library were to find Waldo. All right, next slide please. Um, we have a lot of great partnerships in the community that I want to highlight. Um, we work closely with AARP in the Tax Aid Program and we're gearing up for that this year. Um, we start working with the volunteers, train other volunteers, um, starting right now in preparation for January, for April. So as you can see, um, this past year attendance was up way up from last year, thirty-four percent. Um, and then they piloted a program called the facilitated self-assistance service. Um, and ours was the most successful pilot location in the country. Um, even though we're working with a partner, it takes a lot of planning and coordination and communications. I want to thank our librarian Laura Meeker, who worked with the Tax Aid volunteers this past year. Um, we work with SHARE Vancouver on a couple of different things. Um, SHARE is an organization that provides food, shelter and rental assistance in the city. Um, we have a partnership during the summer at your library where they serve meals in this room. Um, and we served quite a number of meals, about fifty a day. And, um, we make it really nice in this room. We play music and have tables with flowers out and it's just a little celebration, um, summer lunches. We partnered with Clark College this year for the first time on a speaker series. It's a lunch and learn series, we called it, and we worked with, um, leaders and faculty to put on, um, these three topics. The power of education was the first lunch and learn topic. And then red, white and brown, race in the United States was the second. And then the third one was Native American, indigenous or Indian, what do you know about tribes? But those were really well attended as well. All right, next slide please. We've had a really great partnership with Goodwill this year. In January, we started offering ESL beginning classes and they were so popular. Um, we decided to add a second class, um, with intermediate speakers. So those happen, um, weekly. They're very well-intended. And then we added citizenship classes in September. Um, that's a thirteen-week program. In the picture are two women from Ukraine and one woman is from Kazakhstan. So they were really excited to be in the beginner class. Next slide please. Our library has the big, beautiful window in the front on C Street. So I just wanted to highlight some of the displays we did this year. Um, you can see the salmon swimming upstream. We have a dress that we put book covers on twice a year. This year we did it in January to highlight the best-selling books from last year, or if I should say best checked out books from last year. Um, and this one is from the pride display in June. And then for the Hispanic Heritage Month, we had a display. We worked with community partners. Um, this dress is made out of tormal leaves. And then you can see that, so the headdress has marigolds. And then the dress itself is made out of the tormal leaves. Next slide please. And then we do a lot of indoor displays. I always enjoy the interactive displays we do. This is from April. Um, April is poetry month. And I know it's hard to read, but, um, this quote was in the window all month, um, from an American poet, Mary Ruffel. It says, "We are all one question and the best answer seems to be love, a connection between things." And every time I came down the stairs, I would just get goosebumps because I just thought that was so beautiful. So I want to thank Abby, um, one of our senior library assistants for putting that quote together. And then we did a poem in your pocket. So at every service point, there was a little basket and you could take a poem and you would open it up and it would be a surprise. Um, and then we had an interactive display with patrons so they could write an ode to the, to whatever they wanted. You know, you can see someone wrote an ode to their cat. There's a little picture of their cat. I liked this one, the ode to the library, welcoming, sun-filled, a place to belong, full of books and joy and peace. Really great to see. And then next, I think, we have a great space gallery. Uh, it's actually, um, goes through all of the floors, but, um, we have interactive, or sorry, we have, um, displays on the first floor in the glass cases. They're usually ceramics or jewelry or, um, beaded items. I highlighted this one, um, because it's my presentation and that was my favorite. So this is an artist called Hazel Glass. And she is, um, she works with paper. So she takes a drawing and then does cutouts with an exaggerate and then just layers the papers on top of each other. So this is on the right-hand side, a hundred and twenty pieces of paper that makes sort of a sculpture. And next slide please. Want to talk about our programs and outreach. Again, you know, this is just the highlights. We do so much in this library. I wish I could talk about it all, but I only have ten minutes. So I'm trying to talk really fast. So this year we started sensory storytime. Um, that is encouraging neurodiverse children with sensory processing differences to feel comfortable in the library. And that is once a month and it's been really successful. We have, um, lots of compliments from parents on that one. Uh, we have read to the dogs for a while, but it's just so adorable. I have to mention it every time. Um, it's for nervous readers, um, kids who don't really like reading out loud. They can read to an actual dog. If they're scared of dogs, they can read to Oreo, who is sitting right outside. So you can pet Oreo on their way home. We have Thursday thing for our teens. Um, that's just a fun, uh, Thursday evening of movie watching or crafts or activities. Um, the teens have really liked that. We visit the Juvenile Detention Center every Tuesday morning. We have two senior library assistants that go out there. They bring books for the kids to read and they also do, um, like a book club. And they'll talk about, um, they'll, uh, one, the time that I went to visit, they had a, um, presentation on different artworks, pieces of art and the kids talked about art. So it just introduces them to subjects that they might not talk about or think about otherwise. And then we have the, um, outreach to early childhood and assistance programs. We call it ECA. So Beth's going and doing storytime out in the schools. We go to Mini Haha pretty regularly. Washington Elementary, um, so neighborhood schools, again, that might not be exposed to libraries or how stories written, um, rent them at home. Uh, next slide. Uh, frankly, some more programs and outreach that we do. We did, uh, Dia de los Niños Libros events here in this room and, um, may it was very well-attended. We have food and gave out books to kids. That was really fun. We did an outreach in Esther Short Park when they did the Juneteenth event. Um, the picture on the upper right-hand corner is the Hispanic Heritage Resource Fair we did recently. That was very popular. Um, and we're definitely going to do that again. This is the first time we've done it. We have board game day once a month. We have sewing classes. In the bottom left-hand corner, you can see the kids sew these stockings for Christmas. And then Adventures in Art is also a newer program and that's the middle picture there, the wire art. Okay, next slide please. Um, finally, we did, um, a final summer at your library event with miniature horses. And that was one of our most popular events. Um, there's Pearl at the top and Mystic at the bottom. We had a hundred and forty-seven people and it wasn't just old kids, it was people of all ages. So that was very fun. I think the staff had work on it. All right, and next slide please. Um, safety and security. So Charlie mentioned when he did his public comment that we have a new safety and security manager for the district. His name is Greg Racky and he works out of this building. So we're fortunate, even though he's responsible for all fourteen, fifteen libraries, um, we get to have him here a lot of the time. So he's helping us formalize workflow and procedures around safety and security. Um, and he'll be doing trainings for staff. We have a staff training day coming up this Thursday. Um, and he'll be helping us with some trainings then. Okay, can I get to talk about my friends group? Um, I have the best friends group. They are pictured up here in the left-hand corner in the book nook. And Connie in the bottom picture is our book nook manager. She took over from Nancy, who's in the bigger picture there. Um, and they keep that place running and I know it is a lot of work. So I really appreciate all they do for us. They raise money for programs and for things like staff appreciation. And, um, it just makes our life so much better to have them here in our building. Next slide. One of the biggest fundraisers the friends do is our Art for Art event. This year it took place in October and, um, you see the little panels, the wooden panels we give out to the community in, uh, was it June, I think. And then, um, the artists who, who paint or do collages on them could be a famous artist or could be a, uh, high schooler at, uh, the School of Arts and Academics. Um, they're all anonymous and then they're sold for thirty dollars. And that raises money for our library. And, um, this year we did something a little different. We had it out in the whole, on the whole first floor. So we had music. Um, you can see the, the band up there was from the School of the Arts, the jazz bands. That was really fun to have music. And then, um, we had a catered, like catered snacks and cake. And that's Charlie and John, our friends. Next slide. Oh, that's the end of our slides. Thank you for listening. Do you have any questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Next we'll have the FRO organization report with Jennifer and Alicia.
Hello. That was great to hear all about Vancouver. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about some other things that have been happening in the district and just some other programming and outreach that other branches have been working on. Um, the Cascade Park, um, these are always my favorite stories, but, um, staff was doing a preschool storytime and read a story about Dia de los Muertos. And, um, there was a young Latina girl that was super excited to be able to see the character in the book reflected who she was. And it was just a really touching and lovely moment. Um, they also hosted the East Vancouver Business Association meeting. Um, and there was a short presentation on, um, the library's business resources. And it was a great networking opportunity for that organization as well as, um, the friends of the Cascade Park Library and also the foundation. In Goldendale, um, staff were able to participate in a community resource fair at the local senior center. And this really focused on job opportunities, but also awareness of other community resources. Um, so they were hosted by WorkSource and, um, also Washington Gorge Action Plans were present as well as the Coalition, um, for Preventing Abuse and Click Attack County. In Ridgefield, they did a Super Smash Brothers tournament, which those are always fun for the kids. Um, but they just talked about how great it was and that everybody was really encouraging of the other players. So even as the kids, um, you know, lost and were out, they stayed to cheer on their friends and other folks just to see who was going to win the tournament. So those are always nice to hear about as well. And then at Three Creeks, they hosted their second annual, if you give a first grader, a library party bonus. Um, so every first grader that went was able to apply for and get a library card. So they gave out fifty-two cards during that program, which was really great. And then they also give them an opportunity to really highlight our resources, databases for homework help, adaptive materials, world languages. Um, of course, animal-themed for that age group is always really great. Um, and then a craft, which is fun. They also partnered with, um, Skyview High School Robotics Team. So that was really great. They did a wild robot party. So everyone that came to that was able to build, to build their own cardboard robots. So it was fun. And then another business one, Vancouver Mall, the mall, um, hosts a business after hours. So the mall organizes an event to get, to bring in businesses and entrepreneurs to the mall. So, um, they were able to engage over sixty participants. What they did was they had some button making. So that was really fun for Vancouver Mall to do. And then of course at White Salmon, um, staff was excited to host the volunteer reception for the gorge libraries. Of course, Sherry Braga created a great space and, um, event for that. Um, so all the volunteers were really excited about that. And one salmon, of course, was very happy to be able to host that. So the new woodland community library, um, the woodland care center residents were able to come to the library for their very first visit. And they were really thrilled to be able to get around, um, very easily in wheelchairs and walkers. So it was really great to have a new space that's very ADA accessible. And then just a quick note for outreach and community partnerships. Um, staff worked for the Vancouver Community Library to support the Juvenile Detention Center and the Juvenile Justice Center's Holiday Book Fair. Um, and four hundred youth literacy support books, um, sponsored by the foundation were distributed at another community event, um, throughout this past month. So. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The only other thing I would add to the report tonight is on page fifty-nine. It's actually from the foundation update, uh, Rick Smith Road. Uh, we've been talking about his retirement for several months. Uh, and indeed, uh, he is going to retire. His last day in the office is on December twenty-seventh. Uh, but he's coming back for one meeting on January second with me. Uh, but we really appreciate Rick's twenty-three years of dedicated service to helping our libraries by raising millions of dollars over twenty-three years to enhance the services that we offer. It's quite, uh, uh, few decades and, uh, we're going to miss him and we wish him all the best in his much-deserved retirement with his new puppy. That's his retirement gift. So thank you, Rick, for all of your effort.
We have FRO's seventy-fifth anniversary with Julian Mendez.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Julian Mendez and I'm the director of communication zone and marketing. Um, and I've been here one of the two months, a little bit less than that, um, but very happy to be here at a very exciting time, uh, where we are celebrating our seventy-fifth in just a few weeks. Um, and so I'm going to walk us through some history of you and Donalch me at the library and want to share a little bit more of that perspective, um, as well as talk about how we're going to celebrate. And then review some of the continued work that we'll do to make sure that we, um, highlight all the great things that are showing on. So we can go to the next slide. So for seventy-five years, FRO Libraries has lived its mission, strengthening communities through knowledge, experience and creativity. strengthening communities through knowledge, experience, and creativity. Established in 1950, the district has evolved into a regional system that provides not just books, and actually never just books, but also diverse resources. And these include online tools, literacy workshops, STEM initiatives, a number of great activities that are going on in Vancouver and throughout our area. And these, including storytimes, these are just a snapshot of what is offered through FERL. Next slide, please. So when we discuss FERL libraries, it's important to remember that we are part of a national story. And that story began long before 1950. So as I said at the beginning, indulge me as I continue to share history. But in 1731, Benjamin Franklin established the first inscription library in America. And the Pacific Northwest First Library was located in Fort Vancouver, and that opened in 1833. The first library was a free municipal library in Boston in 1848. And then 29 years later, the Vancouver Libraries Association was founded. These efforts culminated in formation of libraries across the country. And in 1950, as I shared, that date marks the founding of Vancouver Libraries, Vancouver Regional Libraries. We're going to get better because it's going to flow out the tongue very soon. Next slide, please. Went backwards. Uh-oh, we're going backwards in time, friends. Celebrate it all. So, okay. There we go, we're there. So with a long history of communities across the country showing support for libraries, and I'll admit a little bit of bias on my end, I'll ask a leading question. Why do people love libraries? Libraries create lasting value in every community, including ours. Libraries foster economic growth. Every dollar invested in public libraries generates an average of $5 in value for the community that they're in. We also see libraries and the programs they create drive measurable gains in literacy and education. Additionally, libraries strengthen community connections. And there's a recent report that's out that shows that over 70% of patrons reported that libraries, that the library usage enhances their sense of belonging. And libraries also improve wellbeing. And that's same study. 90% of patrons said libraries positively impacted their personal growth. And you're now, the bibliography has links to those resources. My last point, although this list is definitely not exhaustive, there's many, many reasons why people love the library. Libraries thrive, and people still love them because they adapt to the needs of their communities. With the next slide. Moving in the right direction to the future. So now that we have some clarity as to why people love libraries, we can ask, why do people love our FERL? And although you all have your own reasons, I'm sure. One that stands out to me, as I get to know this library district, is that FERL has a proud tradition of serving our communities. And once again, thank you in advance for indulging me as I tell your story, soon to become my story, which is the story of FERL and the communities we serve. So we're going to start with our legacy of service. And that story starts in 1891 with Vancouver's first tax-supported public library, followed by grassroots efforts like Ridgefield's Library in 1914. And by 1941, librarian Eva Sanz T introduced the first bookmobile. And during World War II, libraries became essential spaces for education and support. These efforts led to the formation of FERL. And from that point on, communities have chosen to join us. And we have branches that serve in Clark County, the Cattaques, Canadian, and Parto Cal. And today, we offer programming in print and digital resources, board games, kind of full subscription to all of our names, I'm excited. Task help, and more than I have said, and more to come. Additionally, we partner with other organizations, providing offerings, including the Experience Pass, which is also something I'm looking forward to try out, that provides access to local museums and attractions. And all of this is in an effort to not just support our communities, but also to link our communities together, like link our members to each other so that they build connection. And while I hope that I can safely say, those in this room and online, and those in front of me as the board, know that libraries are more than quiet repositories for books. Right? We are. And FERL continue to find ways to show our communities that the true definition of a library is a vibrant hub of learning, creativity, and connection. And recent achievements like Woodland, that was mentioned, and Ridgefield, that was updated in 2021, are ways that we show that we're not only preparing for today, but we're standing for future generations. So we say it loudly, and we hope our patrons and the board joins us in saying that FERL libraries proves that libraries are not just relevant, they are essential. So moving forward, we're looking at our 75th and our framing question. As we've thought about this from communications and marketing lens and other teams, we ask ourselves, how can we celebrate 75 years of FERL libraries by honoring the communities that shaped our success and highlighting what we've accomplished together? So moving to the next slide. So our objective is stated on this slide. It is to foster community pride and deep connection with FERL libraries by celebrating its 75th anniversary, highlighting its legacy of service, and introducing innovative tools and communication strategies that showcase its ongoing value to patrons and communities. So our first strategy is strategic storytelling. We'll share compelling patron stories, as well as others who are part of the service and the communities at FERL, volunteers staff, key milestones and community contributions. Our focus will also be historical and community narratives, highlighting the contributions of women's groups and grassroots movements and efforts that helped shape our story today. And by weaving these into campaigns and events, we'll create that stronger emotional connection that will help to highlight the impact and really bring that to life in all of the individuals that continue to be served. Finally, we'll collaborate with schools, historical societies, and local organizations to amplify this effort. Second, our plan is to launch dynamic digital campaigns featuring engaging trivia. So do you know your FERL? We'll find out. User-generated content, contests, integrative hashtags to spark excitement and increase engagement. Knowing that not everyone is online, we'll also look at other ways to do in print, including our Muse and Events booklet, which is evolving into a more narrative-driven format with a patron-centric lens to really help understand and underline all the resources we offer through that individual touchpoint of whom we serve, you. And then we'll optimize our personalized messaging across various platforms to ensure that we're getting accessible, user-friendly content. Again, trying to meet and tailor to the patrons' needs and their interests. And then finally, or not finally, third, we're going to bring our history to life through a celebration since we're partnering with our programming arm to think of bad ways and good ways. Performances, cultural events, historical incidents. These inclusive, family-friendly events will honor each branch and give a little spark of life to the various regions. We're also going to highlight an anniversary passport program that will encourage patrons to explore branches. So it'll get them out to see the different places. And finally, we'll use data to measure what resonates most, tracking these events, getting feedback to really understand in real time, is this maybe the impact we want so that we can pivot as needed to make sure that we're being responsive to the community? So with all of that, we'll move to the next slide. So celebrating 75 years isn't just about looking back. Though we did go a little bit back in time, but we're here now. It's about building a strong future together. Libraries transform lives. I hope that is something I have illuminated. And FERL libraries does prove that every day. And so as we celebrate our 75 years, I invite the board, I invite all who are listening to join and celebrate it and to stay tuned for more and finding ways to celebrate. But thank you for your time, and I hope that we can make this really exciting year to remember.
And just a couple of comments. Obviously, there's a new logo there that you see to recognize our 75 years. So you'll start to see that across our website and printed materials all of next year. And then in your packet is an executive summary around the 75th that gives you even more detail. I think that Julian has proven that she, they, sorry, are here and much engaged in what we're all about and really championing our story as we move forward. And there's so much of it to tell. So I think it's going to be an exciting year, and I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this so far.
Thanks, presentation. Thank you. Are there any questions? No? You can have anything for me. Thank you.
Is this going to be just a year-long event after event? Or we have a statement that we have a peak celebration? Or tell me your timeline.
Yeah, it's a year-long celebration. The actual date is in, I think it's in July, is when the actual 75th is. But we will be celebrating throughout the year, and branches will have specific celebrations for the 75th lightweight around summertime as well.
Thank you so much. Any other questions today? Another one? No? Thank you.
Thank you. That would be a cancerous, always. Always celebrate.
Time to the business portion of our meeting with celebrities and fans. Did you have anything to say in regards to this first? The purpose of this public hearing is providing a brief description of the 2025 budget and the action that the hearing body may legally take. I will now make a statement to provide an overview of the budget before comments. Thank you.
No, I got my way earlier now because I felt I wasn't here at this point. So in finance, we often are in three worlds. We are in the past. So earlier, we looked at the board financials through October and the present, what financial things are happening now. We talked a little bit about that as part of the board report as well. And then always the future. And so that's what we're going to talk about for 2025 budget and the future. You saw a draft in October. You saw a slightly revised draft again in November. And this is our final draft that we hope to have adopted this evening. This draft is significantly the same as November, one slight modification that flows through. We received our updated numbers for our property taxes and were able to certify our military. And with that, it increased our property taxes by just over $353,000. So that amount flows through the financials, through the budget, by reducing warmer reserves that we have budgeted as being used. There were no changes to the expenditures in this draft. And I apologize, the budget is on pages 73 or 79, but I'm not specifically referencing any page number. I should have said that at the beginning. So revenues are increasing by $353,000. The use of reserves decreasing by that same amount. No changes to expenditures, no changes to our expected beginning cash balance. And of course, the ending cash balance will have an increase driven by the increase in property tax revenues and how that plays into interest revenues and things of that nature impacting our ending balance. This also has an impact on our five-year look-through forecast that we've been speaking about. It has a positive impact on the deficit that we've received, that we've been seeing on our 90-day reserves, meeting that requirement. Nonetheless, we are still at a place where we are not meeting the 90-day reserve requirement in 2026. So while this 353 increase in revenues is positive in many regards, does not quite get us where we need to be for 2026, meeting operating reserve requirement. Any budget questions?
You're watching online, but we'll go right in. Sure. Any questions? So the ground rules for this hearing are that the public comment portion of this will be set for 30 minutes. Each person who wishes to speak will have two minutes during the public comment portion. Your comment must be on the topic of the 2025 budget. Please avoid repetitive comments and behavior. If there's a group, please ask one person to be the speaker or representative so we can fit everyone in if there are a lot of speakers. Now I'll now open the public comment portion of public hearing 2025 budget. Again, as always, if you would like to make a comment, say your name into the microphone for us. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment, online or personally? No one online? Board of trustees, do you have any comments to add? Get ready tonight. I will now close the public comment portion of the public hearing 2025 budget. Do any board members of the hearing body have any additional questions? I don't have Katrina. Any questions? Okay, formally close this public hearing. Thank you. Thank you. The next steps are to adopt Resolution 2024-11, 2025-2, adopting the 2025 budget. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-11, 2025-2, as presented? So. Is there a second? Is there? Is there any further discussion? I move this to you, both of these. Marie Coffey?
Aye.
Mary Ann Duncan Cole? Mary Ann is on the call.
Oh.
Mary Ann, can you say yea or nay? Mary Ann, can you hear us? We can move on and come back. Olga Hodges?
Aye.
Christie Morgan?
Aye.
Mary Williams?
Aye.
Irene Kakarina?
Aye.
Mary Ann, are you there? Need a way to display Olga and Mary Ann on the screen. The motion to approve the 2025 budget is adopted. The public hearing for the 2025 budget approval is now closed. Next. Policy and nominating committee election of officers.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right. So the politizing committee met on December 5, 2024 to produce a slate of officers to bring forward to the board. This policy and nominating committee recommends the following. As Chair Trustee, Christie Morgan. As Vice Chair Trustee-elect, Megan Dugan, who will be official by January, by the January board meeting. And as Secretary Trustee, Marie Coffey.
Thank you, Olga. Policy and nominee committee have brought forward the slate for election. Are there any other nominations from the board? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the 2025 officers of the Fort Vancouver Library District Board of Trustees? I'll move. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? I'm for this two of them. Marie Coffey?
Aye.
Mary Ann Duncan Cole? Olga Hodges?
Aye.
Christie Morgan?
Aye.
Mary Williams?
Aye.
Irene Kakarina?
Aye.
Motion to approve the 2025 officers of the Fort Vancouver Library District Board of Trustees is adopted.
Thank you all for agreeing to serve. And just a reminder that in January, the board chair will put together committee appointments for the year as well. So likely we'll be in touch over the coming weeks to get your interest as those appointments will be put together.
Next, we'll hear about the levy lid lift.
Okay, for the board members, you do have a copy of this presentation in front of you. It was a separate packet, so you can follow on the screen or on your paper copy. So a library board began talking about a levy lid lift at their all-day retreat in September. We spent a good chunk of that day talking about the specifics around levy lid lifts in much more detail than we're going to talk about here tonight. So if anybody in the audience wants to see what the board discussed, it is on our website under the September board meeting. So you can go back and see that full packet. Tonight, we're going to go through some high-level considerations. As Katrina mentioned during the budget adoption, we know that by the time we get to 2026, we are not going to be meeting our fiscal policy fund balance of having sixty to ninety days in reserve. And the reason we have that sixty to ninety days is, as Katrina points out every month, we only receive taxes in April and October. So in the months in between, in order to pay bills that we have on a monthly basis, we need to be able to draw from those reserves. And having that sixty to ninety-day fund balance is critical in order to continue our same level of service and pay our bills on time. So we're going to go to the next slide and more trivia here. Do all FERL taxpayers pay the same levy rate across our three counties plus the city of Woodland? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, very good. Yes, we do. That is a requirement under the RCW for the kind of library we are. Under RCW twenty-seven point twelve, we are an inter-county rural library district. So it's scintillating reading if anybody would like to go and check that out. Next slide. In the state of Washington, property taxes are not based on the increasing value of the properties, but rather on the amount of property taxes assessed in the previous year. And each year's levy may be increased by no more than one percent, unless the public votes for a greater increase, commonly called a levy lid lift. In two thousand and one, the establishment of initiative seven forty-seven is what then established that hundred and one percent levy limit. And so the, the thought process at that time was that in order to grow your budget or go beyond that one percent, the voters would need to vote on that increased tax. And so it was always planned that local governments at some point would have to come back to the voters in regular intervals in order to grow their budget. So FERL has been moving forward with our budget for fourteen years without going back to the voters. That's quite a long time in between levy lid lifts. What that says is we've been very responsible. We've been good stewards of the public dollars and we've created great value from our library system in serving the community. But one percent a year, if you think about prices going up, and everybody knows that prices have been going up, think about only getting one percent an increase to your budget at home since twenty eleven. It doesn't sustain the kinds of increases we have to our budget from our biggest chunk of our budget, which is our personnel budget, our staff. And you've heard many of our public speak tonight about how great our staff do in providing services for the community. They need to be paid. They need to have benefits. Benefit costs have risen significantly. And while we continue to try to find lots of different ways to control those costs, the reality is one percent is not paying the bill. We also offer books and so much more in just buying books and ebooks and keeping pace with demands in the costs that are going up per item since when we asked fourteen years ago, much more than one percent a year. So that's how we got to where we are tonight is a reality that when this initiative passed, there was every intention that local governments would and are coming back to voters on regular intervals when needed in order to sustain the same level of service in their communities. Next slide. This just shows an overview of the levy rate history. So you see in twenty ten, prior to the levy lid lift, we were at point thirty-eight cents per thousand of taxable assessed value. And in twenty eleven, we lifted up to the full limit in the law, which is fifty cents per thousand. And that remained at fifty cents for several years. And then you start to see the decline and that's based on that one percent limit. We were coming out of in twenty ten, the Great Recession. And so that's why I think it sustained for some time. And then the taxable values started to increase, so the rates started going down. And you see that we have come all the way down in twenty twenty-five to point two six eight six per thousand. So you see that actually the levy rate has gone up by a few cents or, you know, a few hundred cents between twenty-four and twenty-five. And that's because of the fact that our taxable values have decreased. And that's due to tax increment financing that we'll talk about in a minute. So that's why we saw a little blip. We're finally, twenty twenty-one is when tax increment financing went into place and we've had several communities put in TIP areas. And now the district in twenty-five is starting to feel that impact. So that's why the rate goes up. Next slide, you can just see the visual, which is much simpler of the lift the last time and then what's happened since that time in the rate. And then the next slide. The yellow line represents revenue over time. The black line, expenses over time. And the blue line or gray, depending on how it came out, are the reserves over time. So early on in a levy lid lift, you expect to be growing your reserves that you then draw upon at the end of the time before you're going back to the voters. And that's exactly what you see in this chart here. You also see where our revenues and expenses were tracking fairly well until recently. Again, much planned of why it's time for a levy lid lift. But I think this really demonstrates in a visual format what is happening. And some might say, well, you just control your budget better. Well, let's remember that in order to do that and continue the same level of service, this is what the cost is. If we want to control the budget by living within whatever the revenue stream is, that means we will have to reduce services. And for a library system that is, most of our expenses go to staffing, that means laying staff off and reducing open hours. That's how you save money. There is not a lot of fat in the budget otherwise. There is our books and our staff. And the rest is really immaterial when you start to look at the gaps we have in funding. So that's how we got also to this place. And so that's why, next slide, we need to be looking at a levy lid lift. Now, there are many kinds of levy lid lifts. And for those of you that want to learn more, you can go to MRSC.org and read all about them. But what the district needs to seek, which we did fourteen years ago, is a permanent, single-year lid lift. And we all say that fast. And what that does is if the voters say yes, we will lift to whatever rate the board will ask on the ballot. And that becomes the new rate that then gets calculated here going forward. And so the next slide shows this in a better visual way. So the blue columns are the, without the lid lift, so just your revenues as they move forward with that one percent increase. But the green shows the permanent, single-year lid lift being passed. And then you see that green continues. So that's part of your ongoing revenue then moving forward. Next slide, as mentioned, we now have something called tax increment financing. And what this allows is for cities, towns, counties, port districts and other combinations to implement a tax increment financing area with boundaries. And within that boundary, those districts, I'll call them, or cities or counties, are able to take all of the growth year over year from that TIP area. So that's whether it's a fire district or a library district or other taxing bodies that have authority to tax in those areas. The TIP comes in and freezes the level that those taxing authorities bring in. And then they capture the growth for up to twenty-five years. So so far, the TIP areas that have formed in our area, Fort of Vancouver, Fort of Ridgefield, city of Ridgefield, and now the city of Woodland is going through that process. We already know with the three, we will estimate a loss of ten point eight million dollars over twenty-five years. So how many TIPS are possible? Well, more than there are now in all of our counties. And so this is something we'll continue to pay attention to. For the junior taxing districts such as the library, we have no option to opt in or out. There is some studying being done at the state level of impacts. And certainly our fire districts and our hospital districts are definitely concerned just as the library districts in watching this because as communities grow, so does the demand. So for example, we just opened a new library in the city of Woodland. Now the city of Woodland is proposing a TIP area. So our expenses for operating that library, because it's a new library and we own it now. Previously, the city owned the hundred-year-old building we were operating in. So our operating costs have gone up just by the virtual of having a bigger building with utilities, the insurance. We added a staff position. So those costs go up. So there'll be more demand on that library because why wouldn't there be and we want there to be. But there's potentially, if the city of Woodland approves their TIP area, there will be a capturing of growth in our tax base for some amount of time. So that is my very quick fifty-cent version of how TIP works. I'm happy to answer questions or if anybody wants to have a lunch and learn about TIPS, we can do that too. Next slide. So back in August of twenty-ten, the last time we asked for a levy lid lift, the voters voted an increase from thirty-eight cents to fifty cents for one thousand. And this was the actual ballot language that got approved. And moving forward to the next slide. This shows who voted, how many people voted in the election from each of the areas and how many voted yes and no in the total. And the really important thing is just like we have one rate that must be taxed across the full district, the votes counted across the whole district. So in this case, you see that Clark County actually did not pass the levy lid lift by just under the majority, whereas Clickatah, Skamania did, city of Woodland did not. But overall, we passed by fifteen point two eight percent. So it's just a simple majority that we're asking. And I highlight this because, well, this is the last time we asked and this was the reality. We asked and passed the first time and that was great. There was over a hundred thousand people less in our district fourteen years ago. There's been substantial growth throughout the district. And so what's really going to be important as we move forward, if the board decides to move forward with a levy lid lift, is we will be going out to talk to anyone and everyone about what a levy lid lift is and what the district needs in order to maintain the same level of service and what else the district might be promising, depending on the rate that we're going to seek. But there, think about that, a hundred thousand people who weren't around the last time we asked. So may not understand the district itself, how it's formed. We often get questions about, well, if the county's in charge, right? But no, we are an independent taxing authority, an independent body. Our board is a governing board. They are appointed by the city of Vancouver in the three counties we serve. But once that appointment is placed, the only other thing they have control over is removing someone from the board. They have no other authority over our budget or how we operate. And so it's really important as a district library that we engage with the public and help to educate them on both how the district operates and what is needed to sustain from a financial standpoint, the services that we offer the community. So the next slide gets into some actual calculations. So the, the pinkish area is our twenty twenty-five rate that we'll be asking for. Though we're looking at twenty twenty-six budget estimates for revenues and expenses. I realize that first column doesn't say revenue, it should. So that should say the estimated budgeted revenues. And so we'll have thirty million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars in revenue, but thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, seven hundred and three in expenses for the same level of service that we offer today. And that's with, you know, the current rate, no levy lid lift. So that's a seven point seven million dollar deficit. We don't have a reserve to, to sustain those kind of deficits for long and continue the same level of service. And that's why we're here today to talk about what are we going to do? What are we going to ask for? So what I asked Katrina to figure out were three rates up there. Obviously, fifty cents is the highest statutory limit that we can ask for. And the last time, that's what we did. We asked to go up to that fifty cents. And it's taken fourteen years for us to get back to this discussion. So it's sustained a long time. And up there, and I'll just start at the bottom, you'll see that if we were to lift to fifty cents, we estimate that it would take twelve years before we would need to come back and have discussions to plan for the next levy lid lift. Included in that number are the funding for the Wushuville Library, the remaining gap, as well as one additional library. And my, in my estimate, there will be a need for a library in northeast Clark County. Where? I don't know. That's why we have to do our facilities assessment. But in order to project finances, it felt prudent to put these in. That doesn't mean that if we would go forward with that fifty-cent rate, that you've decided to do those buildings. Those conversations and planning would come later. It's more a placeholder to put those dollars in. So for Wushuville, it's six million to finish that project. And for an additional library, we put in fourteen million. One thing to note is that if you back out the fourteen and the six, I think that's twenty million, it doesn't reduce the, or it doesn't increase or reduce the period of years before we would have to ask by much at all. And the other thing to recognize is that we know it's going to be very costly to go to the voters. And we'll talk about that on a future slide. But we're thinking about that when we think about how long we want to go out. So the 42 cents for 1,000 allows us to also put in funding for those libraries, but reduces the amount of time until we go back to the voters to six years. And then the 37 cents is the least amount we could ask for to maintain our 60 to 90 day fund balance. It has no new buildings or capital outlay for current facilities. So it's not really feasible. But that would be the least that we could offer for same level of service, but not maintaining our current facilities. Next slide. So this then looks at what the estimated cost for an individual taxpayer is on an annual basis. So in August of 2024, these were median home values and the counties and the city listed and what the current amount that they will pay in 2025 based on our levy and then what the proposed rates would mean. So it is obviously an increase, no matter which way you look at it. And then between the lowest to the highest is anywhere between 70 and, well, around $70 a year. Next slide. So we are beyond the timeframe to put in a resolution for the spring elections and those elections are the most expensive, the special elections. They would cost the district because of our size and how many counties we're in, almost $600,000. And so just to be on the ballot. So we're recommending looking at either the primary or the general. And my recommendation is the primary. That is when we asked 14 years ago and we're successful. But it also allows us to be able to go to the voters and understand what their decision is so that we can move into our budget planning for 2026 in the fall with that knowledge. Next slide. So this is the reminder of the election cost. And so the least expensive election is the general election in November, 280,000. We're estimating the August election to be under 400,000. We don't know the exact number because it depends how many issues are on the ballot, because it gets divided based on how many issues are on the ballot. So the 400,000 is just an estimate. We have put into our budget for 2025 that you just adopted, cost for the elections as well as increased communication and marketing costs to get the information out to our voters. And so that is already included in the budget. An amount of 500,000 is what we included for all of the efforts. Next. This is a reminder of what we need to do to get the levy lid lift on the ballot. The board would need to approve a resolution and that resolution would be sent with all other required documents to each of the county auditors. We'd have to have an explanatory statement that our attorney would put together and that would appear in the voters pamphlet. We need a list of individuals who will serve on a pro and con committee. I think we can find the pros pretty easy. I'm not sure who would be a con. But we would have to search for those, including putting ads in the local paper in order to find people. If we are not able to as a district to find pro and con committees, the counties will appoint those or attempt to appoint those for us. If you have one person on a committee, they will consider that a committee and it's usually up to three. Because we are in four counties, we need four pros and four con committees. Also, any other forms that each of the counties require would have to be filled in. And if you back on the page with the election dates in order to be on the August 5 ballot, all of these things would need to be submitted to the counties by May 2. And then the last page. Use of public facilities in election campaigns. There's a lot here to read and remember, but I will sum it up this way. As public employees and public facilities, we are able to inform the voters about what we're asking. We're asking for a levy lid lift for X amount and what we are promising, meaning what are we going to do with the money we get? Or if it does not pass, what does that mean? So what we cannot do is tell people how to vote. We cannot tell them to vote yes or no, but we can tell them all of the facts about what we're asking. Because we do allow our meeting rooms to be used in a non-discriminatory, equal access basis, we can allow committees to hold meetings in our community rooms for the pro and con committees. You often see, when people are on a ballot, you'll see as you drive around town, signs that say, you know, yes for this or no for that. The library cannot do that, but a public action committee could form. The library doesn't form it. Other interested parties can do that. So that's not our decision. Our decision is really about putting the levy lid lift on the ballot, understanding what rate we need and what else we need to be considering. The levy lid lift timeline, was that? There it is. That's in the packet on page 82. And this is just a draft timeline that helps you get a sense for where we are. So it reminds us that, you know, we've been talking about the levy lid lift since the September board retreat. We did a recap last month. Obviously, a little bit more detail this month. And we expect to be coming back next month with enough information that the board would be comfortable in making a decision. It's a very important decision and we want to make sure all your questions are answered. Then we will be moving into in January internally, service plan development, which really means coming up with all of the details for what the rate will fund. And if it doesn't pass, what our current mileage, I'm sorry, our current levy, what that will fund in 26. So what reductions we have to make to live within that rate. And so that as we move forward with our information campaign, we will know the specifics of what we're telling people. We will also soft launch the public information campaign January through March. And what that is, is like a book. The library is going to be on the August 5 ballot. Look for more information soon or whatever. Julian will come up with those words to help people. We will also spend a lot of time educating our staff and our wonderful friends of the library about the levy lid lift and why we need it and through education workshops that we'll offer around the district. And then at the April board meeting is when we anticipate you would approve that service plan with all the specifics so that we can turn around and begin our public information campaign and our community engagement and public speaking sessions that would take us from April through the vote in August. And with 550,000 people that we represent, there's a lot of people to connect with and talk to. And it's going to take everyone doing that. So we'll make sure to have, anybody that wants to help get that word out, we'll have lots of materials to give specifics. And then the vote on August 5 and then immediately rolling into our 2026 budget preparation. And the same thing we do every year around our setting our levy rate, having our public hearings and setting our budget and then starting our year. Whatever those results are, we continue to move forward with those results. I hope just by the virtue of who we hear from day in and day out, who appreciate our services and understand the importance of public libraries today and all the things that we do, books and so much more, that this will be an easy sell, that this is about maintaining good quality library services across our district. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
I know we've talked about this a few, more than three times lately, but it's a lot to digest. So feel free to bring up questions or if you guys want to discuss anything, now is a great time.
We have to designate which level of, what, the 50% of the? It's not a multiple. It's, we picked them and that's the one.
Right. So we're, today, we're giving you some options to look at. And I don't know, Miranda, if you could go back to that slide with the rates. What we did not do is give you all the details that go with each rate. We just gave you the high level budgeted estimated revenues and expenditures so that you could see the impact of how long it would take before we'd have to go back.
That's not a sliding scale, is it?
No.
That's not a sliding scale.
Yeah.
We pick a target.
You pick a target. So it was giving some options there. Because sometimes people say, well, you should just ask for the lowest rate to get by. So remember, we're going to spend a half million dollars to ask. So if, let's say, the voter said yes and we went with 37 cents. Well, we're not going to be able to take care of our current facilities at that. And in five years, we're going to be back with another half million or more because those costs for the counties keep going up as well that we pay on the ballot. And so I believe that that is why we asked for the full 50 cents the last time, was recognizing, it had been since, I think it was 1993, it's in front of me, 1993, the previous time, so many years in between. And I think the thought is to lift to the fullest rate. But what I'm more interested in at this point is kind of hearing the board's conversation reaction to the 42 cents versus the 50, because those are the two realistic rates. Obviously, there's a difference of one will last six years, one will last 12. So we still have that issue. So interested in having you have some conversation on that to provide us some things to think about before we come back in January.
My thoughts on those are that I really, saving money. And so I would tend to go for the 42 cent one, but then also looking at the timeframe as a voter, if I voted yes on that and then you're coming back to me in six years, then I would be, you know, why are you asking for more money? Just ask me the money. So it kind of feels better to go for the 50 cents so that we're not going out again for another one. In my mind, I wouldn't really want to go for the 37. That was my.
I think it's interesting we talk about saving money. There's a cost to putting things on the ballot. Some people go back again is actually not saving money.
Yeah.
It's that are interested, go for the 50 cents.
Yeah, good point.
Is there any hope that we will have more information on the grant process for Waschuggal and how much they're going to be able to? Because if we do the 42, then it doesn't include.
That doesn't, that does include Waschuggal. No, we won't know about that for some time. So we do know that we are asking for a budget appropriation, $5 million. And we have support in District 17 to ask for that. And the City of Waschuggal is a great partner in championing that as well. But we will continue to seek alternative funding for that library as well as the Friends of the Library continue to fundraise there as well and our foundation does as well. So even if we were able to get grants or other appropriations for that building, what that would do is just provide more funding for something else and or lengthen the time that we wouldn't have to go back for.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember we aren't just asking for this for Waschuggal. It's for everything. And then Waschuggal's awesome that we can get it done. Was Oliver trying to talk online? I couldn't hear him. Oh, Mary Ann, are you trying to talk? You're muted right now, Mary Ann. If you are, you're muted.
No, I was muted before and I'm still muted.
Oh, you're unmuted now.
Okay.
I'm not muted now?
Oh, we can hear you, Mary Ann.
Oh, good. I had a lot to say before, but I'll just keep my mouth shut for a while. It's a very difficult situation. I think we better keep the, make the temperature readings on how our population's feeling about taxes right now. Sometimes there's just these waves of feeling that once they settle down, they look at their own rather than listen to the garbage going on on the news. So we need, I think, to take that temperature and really make sure we explain. And I think what Jennifer talked about today was well taken. And then we start making those into bullet points because there are good reasons why we need to increase our income. But we need to really point out the problems that are creating that.
Yeah, you have some good points. I think it is important to know the temperature, but it sounds like if we wait, we're going to be facing reduction of services as early as next year, 2026. 2026. And if we, let's say we wait, we say, temperature's not going to let's wait. That drives us then, we can't go right on the next ballot, correct? We have to wait another year for time for application.
You don't have to wait a whole year, but you would have to wait till you could afford to be on the ballot again, which again, is basically at the August or November ballots. And you would want to, if it failed, you would want to understand from the public in a different way what, why we failed and what would change if we asked again. We would have to go again at some point and because we would continue to reduce services until the lift happened.
And reduce, like I mean layoffs and everything, pretty much, across all.
Yes, open hours, layoffs, what we're offering, materials.
Any other questions or discussion today?
I apologize for not being able to make it. I thought I would be operating better on my computer, but it was blocking me out for quite a while because I had two other programs going in my system. But I really want to review what you've told us today. Thank you, Jennifer. You really kind of fleshed out where the problems are. And I want to be able to speak to my public here, and I will, that trying to maintain is, without some help, is going to be impossible. But I want to be sure that they understand that we're, you know, that our salaries are in the middle. They're where they belong. And am I lying about that or is that true, Jennifer?
No, I mean, we have struggled with salaries, as you know. You'll remember my first three months here, hearing the staff come to each board meeting and talk about their salaries. We were in the middle of negotiations at that time. And we will begin to negotiate later this year for one of our unions. And we will begin to negotiate later this year for one of our unions, and we'll have an extra year for the other one. But for entry-level staff, we are still struggling because of the compression created from minimum wage to get those wages where they need to be. We will have a salary survey happening this year. And, you know, it's very important that we continue to try to address salaries the best we can. A lot of times, people think, oh, well, government employees, you know, what do they need? Well, they need good salaries too. They are part of our community, they work very hard, they're asked to do a variety of things to really support our communities. And so, yeah, salaries and benefits are a huge part of our budget. But it is our staff that bring the library to life. It is our staff that create community connections, that plan programs, that open our doors, that welcome all. And if we can't continue to attract and retain staff, then we're going to have a different issue. And so, we know, because you hear every month at the board meeting, we're under budget because we have all these vacancies. Well, some of the vacancies are things that, for example, as I came in as a new director, there's been an amount in the budget for me to create new positions in our structure. And I've been slow to do that, because I had a lot of turnover at the administrative level that had to be complete. But we're ready to move forward with some of those. One of those positions was our Safety and Security Manager. That's a new position this year. But we have other positions at our Public Services Assistant level, at our SLA level, at our librarian level, that are vacancies that take time to recruit. And we're constantly recruiting. And we have to compete at our entry level with retail. And sometimes, they're making more in retail. And that's a concern ongoing, when we're asking for, you know, complex knowledge and skills to provide services to our community. So I feel very strongly that this will be an ongoing pressure point that we try to continue to find ways to solve, so that we can have marketable salaries and attract people and retain them.
I keep thinking about, as you mentioned, that staff is the largest cost, and benefits are very expensive. Could you please just detail for us publicly what benefits mean? As a former manager and librarian, I know how expensive healthcare gets, and I don't know that, like, when the community hears about increase, like, that that is a very, very real cost.
Yeah, well, healthcare, and again, we are across three-plus counties. So when we look at negotiating healthcare, we have to make sure our employees in the gorge are able to have healthcare as well. So I bring that up, because we've been with Kaiser for many, many years. And each year, their costs are going up. And this year, in negotiations, they came to us with a 14% increase in cost. We were able to negotiate that down, because probably our laugh-out-loud reaction, that, you know, I have a 1% increase in revenue. How am I going to pay for that kind of increase? And we were able to work with them without reducing the benefits to get that down. But one of the things we are doing this in 2025 is working with both of our unions and our non-representative staff to form a committee to look at benefits and benefit options, what's important to staff, so that as we enter into our next round of negotiations, we'll really be looking at how to contain those costs, but continue to offer good benefits. We do have good benefits. We have healthcare, we have dental vision healthcare. We also offer employee assistance programs, wellness programs, vacation sick time, et cetera. But I think, oh, pension, of course, public pension through the state. And so, all of those costs continue to rise. And there's lots of ways of dealing with that, but because our salaries are not such as corporate America, one of the things we offer are good benefits. And so, it's a balancing act. And I think that, you know, if you, I always say to our staff, ask your neighbors what they get for benefits at their jobs, and let's measure that. Just as we look at the salaries of our employees and know where we're doing okay and where we're struggling, we also need to continually remind staff of how much the total cost of compensation is, which is salary, wages, and benefits. And I think it's pretty eye-opening when you see that bottom-line number.
Benefits part, that makes me feel the 50 cents is very appropriate, because the cost of this world is rising a bit faster. And in order to actually save money in the long term, you need to go for the maximum.
Do your employees, Jennifer, have much argument about your benefit package? It is a very, especially with the dental, it's a very good one. Are they pushing that at all, or is it just, they feel like it's on the board and it's there?
I will just say that we have collective bargaining agreements that outline our benefits, so we've come to agreement with our employees. Whether or not everyone thinks they're the best or not, I couldn't answer. I definitely know, just from my own experience over a lifetime, that we have very good benefits here.
Thank you, and I was wondering if that was being argued much, but it sounds like that part of the package is pretty much resolved.
Any other questions or discussion?
Hey, I'm here, I'm listening along, and I feel really confident about all of this. I feel like we had some great information tonight. I think it was really well expressed and communicated. And I just feel like we're in good hands, so I appreciate all the work that went into preparing this.
We're going to move on to our executive session. The Fort Van Gogh Regional Library District Board of Trustees will now meet in the executive session to discuss personnel as allowed by RCW 4230-110-1G and collective bargaining as allowed by RCW 4230-410-4B. The Board of Trustees will be in executive session for 40 minutes or until 8:40 PM. The Board of Trustees is expected to take further action following the executive session. So we are going to actually leave, and you all, they're welcome to stay here. So you all are welcome to stay here, we're going to move to a different area. Thank you.
And Mary Ann and Olga will get online as soon as we get upstairs. It'll take us a few minutes.
Thank you for remembering us.
Meet you on Google Beat.
Hi.
You're back, honey.
Okay, thank you. Bye bye.
Are you ready?
Olga, are you back?
I'm here.
Okay, let me resume our meeting now. First up is the resolution for the ASME CDA amendment. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-12 ASME CDA amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I said it.
Any further discussion? I move this to a vote please.
Marie Coffey?
Aye.
Mary Ann Duncan Cole?
She said aye.
She said aye.
Okay. Olga Hodges?
Aye.
Kristy Morgan?
Aye.
Mary Williams?
Aye.
Irina Kakareena?
Aye.
Motion to approve resolution 2024-12 ASME CDA amendment is adopted. And finally, we count your resolution 2024-13 director's review and compensation. The personnel committee has met and reviewed Jennifer's work and have received comparisons to other similar directors who have taken all of this information into consideration. In light of the hard work and dedication Jennifer has shown at FRL, the personnel committee recommends salary increase of 3%. In addition, the personnel committee is recommending to increase vacation accrual to 25.5 days per year as a monthly accrual of 17 hours per month. She will continue to accrue and use vacation and sick time in accordance with FRL's personnel menu. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-13 director's review and compensation as amended?
So moved.
I said it.
Any further discussion? I move this to a vote please.
Marie Coffey?
Aye.
Mary Ann Duncan Cole? This is done. Olga Hodges?
Aye.
Kristy Morgan?
Aye.
Mary Williams?
Aye.
Irina Kakareena?
Aye.
Resolution in 2024-13 director's review and compensation is approved. Let me move on to board comments. I want to thank you for all your hard work this year. Happy anniversary and we're really glad to have you. Also, thank you Molly for hosting us here and for the friends for the lovely dinner. If anyone, oh, but thank you so much for that. It was really great. Any other board comments tonight?
Yes, Jennifer, thank you for all of the work you've put in this year. We'll probably be able to have you again next year.
Hey, I wanted to thank everybody for a great year. Lot of big things happened this year. It's going to be great next year. Jen, congrats again on your one year anniversary. I'm really excited for the board moving forward and everybody have happy holidays.
I think Mary Ann would like to talk. There's a way to unmute her.
I would like to say thank you and I appreciate all your patience with this machine as I tried to participate in the meeting. And I think that one of the things I did this year is I visited most of the libraries, watching the Friends of the Library. And those group of people are amazing. They have contributed so much, providing individuality for each of the different libraries. I went to the White Salmon one meeting about a week and a half ago. Again, excellent work. We need to kind of start feeding back a little bit about how much we appreciate them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want, thank you everybody for welcoming. For welcoming.
Why? We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
The next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January 21st at 6:00 PM at Task Gate Park Community Library and also High Gravestune. Thank you all for coming. Merry Christmas.